Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. This is the Communications Committee of the Disability Commission on Disabilities. And we are joined tonight by Claire, co-chair, Michael Rodriguez, Rose DeKes, and Dr. Lewis. So we will start off with new business. Well, I guess we should first do a call to order and approval of the minutes. Did you all have a chance to review the minutes?
I moved that we approved them.
Can I get a second, please?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to new business. We have, the first item is the CITL news release per Davy. And I might need to lean on either Claire or Dr. Lewis for a little more context on what that is.
So I actually, I have the email pulled up where he has sent a request, Davy. And he is looking to have us put together a news release and a flyer to send out to everyone by next week to disperse to the press. And he'd also like to have our partners share on their Facebook feed. So it's regarding the, oh, wait.
That's the walk and roll.
This is the walk and roll. I'm so sorry. I was all eager thinking that I had the right thing pulled up.
Yeah, I saw that. I wasn't sure what the CITL news release was for, though. Is anyone familiar with that?
Yes, he sent details today, I think yesterday or today, too, Claire. Davy wants us to maybe send out a release about it being sort of on the way and that there is a number now that people can call to get help with resources and that eventually we're going to have a space. I think, is that what you got from Claire or did he say anything to you?
I don't, I don't have, I don't have anything. The only thing that I have is the, is information regarding the walk and roll.
Let me see if I can find it. He, he said, he asked Jordy, remember the gentleman who spoke with us from Columbus, to give us some bullet points as to what he could, what we could say in the news release.
Okay, so what we'll do is we can follow with Davy and get a little bit more clarification on what he's looking for on that. I'm not familiar with that, so I would have to get looped in on what it is he's hoping for us to do. But I'm sure we can accomplish putting together a news release once we have all the details.
Yeah, so I actually, I just saw, I just found the email and it's originally requested as a newspaper write-up, but I think what they mean is, you know, just a press release to send out to the newspapers regarding the Center for Independent Living. And Jordy is supposed to send us talking points, but I haven't seen an update since last week. So I will follow up with Jordy to make sure that we are, we're just all on the same page. And an area, and I'll copy you as well, just to get you folded in on that, too.
Yeah, Jordy is the executive director of the Southeastern Ohio Center for Independent Living. He's the one who came to the commission and, oh, not came, by Zoom spoke with us a couple of months ago about the center.
Well, that's great that they made enough progress to make that announcement to the community. So I look forward to that. Any questions on that before we move on? No? We'll move on to the next bullet item, which we've already kind of referenced, which is the walk and roll news release, which is an upcoming event in April that the Disabilities Commission is hosting. And Davy provided a number of bullet points on items that he'd like included in that. So I think a news release would be fairly easy to put together. And so I'm happy to do that, or if any of you would like to do that, feel free to throw your hand up.
I can do that.
Okay, great.
Yeah. I feel like I have been really behind on a lot of my extracurricular work, work. So I'm really trying to get better at like setting goals for myself and this will help to have a concrete deliverable. So I can do that and then copy the rest of the committee before we send out to Davy, if that works.
That sounds great. And we could create a Facebook event as well. I think that you guys have done that in the past. So that should be fairly easy to do and we can invite folks and help get the word out.
Claire, I'm sorry. If you'll write down a few things that you plan to do, like the Facebook event, and we can do the notices to the paper and just reminders and things like that, then we can all get together our minds and make sure that we've covered all the bases. I usually do just a little checklist of things to do.
Sounds great. Any other discussion or questions about the walk and roll before we move on? Okay. Third bullet item under new business is posting releases to Facebook. Clarify process. And again, I might need to lean on Claire or Dr. Lewis to get some context on what that's about.
I think I sent that one, I sent that one to Claire. Sometimes I might put something on Facebook, sometimes Rose. I just want to make sure we're channeling everything to Claire so that we don't have three or four different, putting the same thing on from different sources. If that makes sense.
We should put it through Claire?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
And I think the other person who posts a lot is Barry. So she should get the word.
Sure, and I know that I have been, because I'm not, I'm not on Facebook anymore. So it's, it's been a little bit of a learning curve for me to try and remember to go back to that social media platform to post things. So I think, what I used to, what I used to do is that I had a schedule for Sunday nights where I would plan everything out through the week and I just need to recommit myself to that schedule. It's, it's been so crazy since the new year. I thought that the new year would calm things down a little bit, but it was a little naive. So if I need assistance with the Facebook posts, I may lean on you guys for content ideas and that way we can schedule accordingly. But I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. Sorry, my cat is saying bad again.
Well, Claire, what we should probably have on now is the release that they, I mean, the column that the A News published for Athens Ability, we should have that on. And I usually send notices about the different meetings. So you probably post those, right?
I haven't done regularly. I was, I was good on that, but, but I know especially for probably city regulations, too, we need to be making that available on all platforms. So I'm definitely going to be committed to that moving forward, especially since I'm becoming more familiar with the commission's schedule. So I think it's something that's, it's going to come, it's going to come easier.
And then I think it'd be really nice that we put in our minutes mentioning how well the Ability Athens was received, you know, like, because we really got a lot of eyes looking on it. And I think it would really be nice to record for the posterity, right? I mean, because, you know, five years from now, people won't remember when we started, right?
You know what's interesting, too? Rose brought this up, and I hadn't really thought about it. When we had the last discussion, remember Athens Ability? And I think Rose may have suggested that. Our logo actually says AA. Did you notice that?
No.
Those two As, and I don't know, someone designed them several years ago, but it just said Athens Ability.
Oh, right. And I have, and I have no idea what, how that happened.
That person was meant to be then.
Yeah, you're right, exactly.
Well, do we have anyone in mind for the next, the next column?
You might want to ask at the meeting next week.
Okay.
So it won't all be on us. And just don't let the meeting go without having a commitment from someone or two or three people for the next two or three.
Okay. And Claire, to talk quickly, real quick about the Facebook schedule. I know you mentioned maybe getting into a habit of scheduling things on Sundays. You know, we certainly don't want to try too hard to get stuff on Facebook. So if it feels like it's a struggle to find content or we're trying too hard to find content, you know, we can pull back a little bit. We don't have to do everything, you know. I don't know how, I would have to look back to see how regular you were doing it before. But, you know, once a week is okay, I think. Busier times, we can do more during a week when we have a lot going on. But when things are slower, I think it's totally acceptable to pull back a little bit and maybe just do one a week or something like that. That way we're not, you know, we ensure we're providing valuable content. You know what I'm saying?
Right, right. That's a good point.
I, I started a Facebook page a few years ago and the only intent was to just announce our meetings. You know, that was the big thing. It was like, because that got the message out to all the people who were liking our page. And, and it's grown over the years, but I think everybody should remember that, that, you know, part of it is, is that our readers in Facebook want to know about basically that kind of information, like what's going on.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, rather than, because it is, it can get really overwhelming, I think, for people to think of stuff.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
And Claire was posting a lot, too. Remember, we were doing the 30th ADA? So there were a lot of articles coming out. So that's why we were pushing so much out. But I agree, Erin, just once a week, whatever's available is just fine. If you don't find anything once a week, Claire, just wait another week.
Right, exactly. You know, it'll kind of ebb and flow as news comes out. It's pertinent to what we want to share or what we're doing as a, as a commission. And that's just the way to, you know, way it rolls sometimes. So I wouldn't stress it if you don't have enough for a given week. All right.
I just wanted to say thank you. I'm so sorry, because like usually I'm either at zero miles an hour or 100 miles an hour and it's good to have the reminder that like, you can have a balance, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, you know, it's just like the new, the flow of news. There are, there's a lot, sometimes there's a lot going on and sometimes there's not, and that's okay. Moving on to old business, if we're done with the Facebook conversation. Again, we touched on this already, the March Athens Ability column, which we should probably invite Davy to do on the upcoming, I'm sorry, what's it called? The, the walk and roll? I guess he's asked us to do that. He kind of asked us to do that, though. But we could always present it back to him if he wanted to be the author of that. Or we could do it. But anyway, that could be the topic for the March column, which is the upcoming walk and roll and why it's done, how many that's, you know, how many we've done in the past and that sort of thing.
Yeah, we could do the goal for it, right?
He could do the column, of course, we could do the.
That's true, that's true. He asked us to do the news release. That's right, yep, thank you. Okay.
That's a great idea.
So Davy's up for doing that in March. Any future topics that we can consider for April?
Well, I think, I think the upcoming walk and roll, that one will be for April. Because wasn't Dr. Lewis's posted or published last week?
Right, it was, we got it to them, I think, in February, but they didn't publish it.
I see. So I think we're on a first week of the month schedule. So, yeah, this next one would be for April, which would be great for the walk and roll. And so then it would be May, June.
Absolutely, okay. So do we, do we have any ideas that we want to throw out now to think about? Or if not, just keep that in the back of your minds, that we have that sort of routine developed now?
I think for the walk and roll, that Diane and Noah are kind of going to host it. And they've already sent their pictures to me and to Claire to include in the release. And of course Davy can put that in the column, too, along with his as the author.
That's perfect. Okay, so as you get ideas, just either email them to myself or to Claire and Dr. Lewis or the entire committee, or just bring them up at the next meeting. All right, anything else on that before we move on?
Michael, you're mighty quiet. Let me take over, Claire. Erin, I'm just trying to see what Michael's going up in there.
I'm just learning, meeting by meeting, everybody.
Okay, good.
I, I feel like sometime in May, feel like sometime in May, A, I'll be feeling better and then B, scheduled to be totally vaccinated so I can do a little bit more kind of boots-on-the-ground volunteer stuff with the committee. So I want to put that out there. And learn a little more right along the way, so.
That actually just reminds me, I think a really good topic for Athens Ability in May would be the vaccine, because I think, isn't that the president's goal? Is to have everyone vaccinated by May or in May or something like that? And so, I'm sorry, I'm echoing a little bit, but, but I think that would be, that would be a really good topic. And we could even pose that to the rest of the commission and see if anyone would really want to advocate for that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'm sorry, was I talking over someone? Or maybe it was my echo, too. I'm hearing myself echo as well. But I think it's a good, that's a good one. Reminding everyone how important it is to get the vaccine, how it's not just about yourself, it's about other people. That's a good one. Okay, moving on to commissioners' features on Facebook, starting with Davy. And I believe he's, that's already been prepared. And we've, so just to provide you with some background, Michael, this was a feature that we talked about doing to educate the community about the commission members and also the commission in general. So it was, it would be like a photo of the person and then some background information about who that person is, their role in the commission, their role in the community, why they're involved with the commission, just to kind of hopefully better connect with the community at large. And Davy provided, used himself as an example of what those could look like. So we have that already put here. And so what do we think about the regularity of that? Want that to be once a month, perhaps? Maybe that's a good routine?
And are you thinking of getting it in the news media?
We could certainly send it to them for their consideration, but I think this was primarily thought to be used on Facebook.
Okay, yeah, because Facebook, which is an audience of, you know, our 300 and so people. But I think that I'm thinking of a wider audience to help people know about people who are living in the world who have a disability, you know? And are contributing to the world with a disability. They're not with their disability, but, you know, I mean, they're part of the world. And I don't know. A News, A News very seldom does articles like that, but definitely the messenger will, don't you think? It would be worth finding out.
What we could start doing in addition to, I think, just featuring the commission members on Facebook, but as we get a new member of the commission, then introduce them to the community. We've got Lisa Simpson on. So maybe we could, in the next month or so, do a release about her and get her photo and get it to the paper.
That's a good idea, for the new person, yeah.
Absolutely, that's a good idea.
And I, I think in terms of timing, it would, especially to kind of space it out with the Athens Ability column, it might be best, I think, to post those features to Facebook the same time or the same week that we post our commission meeting announcements, you know, to let people know like, hey, the next commission meeting is going to be this Wednesday. And then maybe the next day, or the day before, post that member feature to try to make it a little bit more personal, kind of drop people in. Like, oh, hey, I know that person, I might see what this meeting is all about, or something like that. So that's just the thought.
So did we decide to do the profile once a month or maybe once a quarter? Or did we say once a month?
We hadn't decided yet, actually.
I suggest once a quarter, because with the column and everything else going on, it just might be like pulling teeth. Information once a month to post on Facebook about the commission members.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I think that'd be just fine. Yeah.
Okay, good.
So maybe we start with Davy? If we have, that has not gone up yet, correct? Okay, so then maybe the next one would be Lisa. But to Dr. Lewis's point, maybe we plan to prepare a news release about Lisa sooner rather than later. And the profile can always go up when the time comes. But getting something, getting a news release together on Lisa now, I think, would be a good idea.
Since Claire's working on the other, I can do the release on Lisa.
Great, thank you. And then we can, when the time comes, we can ask who's, who wants to be featured next. But it sounds like we have a good plan now for the, for the member features. Okay, any other questions or comments about that before we move on? All right, moving on to forms for other committees. And I'm sorry, you'll have to remind me what it's about.
I think that is for the other committees to submit requests for, I'm sorry. Can everyone make sure that they're muted? Or, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the echo makes it difficult.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I think this form is for the other committees to fill out and give to us whenever they're looking for publicity for something. And this would ensure that we get all the information we need at once to make sure that it gets out there right away. Because I know, especially in my position at Hapcap, there are a lot of follow-up questions on, you know, what are, to me, pretty basic details, but not everyone works in communications, so they wouldn't know. So I think just having that form to, to fill out and then we all, we have everything on the same page and we can make sure that we're working efficiently enough. And that, because I had to implement the system at Hapcap, I'm, I'm happy to kind of do a rough draft. It would not take long at all for the commission and then we can just refine it from there.
That sounds great. Appreciate that, Claire.
It's basically like a work order process, but it doesn't have to be as, you know, doesn't have to be as rigid for this. But still, just kind of providing, providing the basic detail.
I wonder if everything, can you hear me? Am I here?
I got you now.
Okay. Does every member of the commission know already that if they want to communicate to the wider world to contact Claire? In other words, should you send out an email, you know, to everyone in the commission saying, if you ever have anything you want to communicate, let me know? Because some people don't know, right? Or is that already done?
It was a little hard to hear you for a bit there. Just to make sure I understood you, Rose, were you asking if the commission knows, if they have a news item that they want to communicate, they need to send it to Claire? Is that what you asked?
Right, exactly.
I wonder if we should be sending it to the committee as a whole and not just Claire? Please. I don't want to tell anyone. No, I just don't want to overburden just one person with all of the commission's requests.
Yeah, I think the committee, anything that anyone stands, they should send it to all of us. And that way, when we have our next meeting, we all can.
Send it to us, really, exactly. Then we all can come, come to these committee meetings informed and then we can divvy up the work.
Right.
Right, good.
Okay, so maybe we can share that at the next full commission meeting? Yep. All right. Any other questions or comments on that before we move on? Okay, the next item is the Athens County Board of DD feature. And I, I think this is the Athens News Special Edition. Originally was to be published on March 3rd, but the A News ad team, sorry, the echo has me talking a little slower because I keep hearing myself double. Their ad team needed more time, so it won't be published until the 17th. Which was a little disappointing, but it is what it is. I do appreciate the commission for getting me their submissions by the original deadline. I know that was pretty tight, so I appreciate that. But all of that was submitted to the A News and they have it. And I should be receiving a draft within the next few days. And the goal is to use all of the material that was submitted. And then hopefully we'll see it on the 17th coming out. Any other questions or comments on that before we move on?
Yeah, just thank you for including, well, of course, you're the commission, too. Just thank you for including us.
No, it was, it was an easy fit. It was a good fit. So last bullet item is reviewing our goals for 2021. And Claire, I'm sorry, do you want to remind us of our goals?
I feel like my goal needs to be to get it together. I am doing this agenda, I told myself I should put the goals on there and I didn't. So I, I apologize for that, but I am, I am pulling it up right now where. Where in terms of promoting the work of the commission committees, we are going to be developing a form to streamline that process. So we do have a deliverable there that will definitely be done by our next meeting. And then measurably increasing our social media presence. I think that that's going to be pretty easy too, once we have established a more regimented schedule. We're going to be able to see the numbers and the amount of clicks that we're getting, the amount of. The one thing that really surprised me when I was posting pretty regularly was that we didn't get any new likes to the page. We may have received one, but I think what needs to happen is that commission members who are active on Facebook, because I know, I think I saw Dr. Lewis and Davy do this for certain articles, is sharing it to their own pages so that they can share it with their friends and their colleagues. And that way, it kind of helps spread the word about that we have a presence online. So I think that might be a good thing to mention once we start posting regularly again, maybe not the next meeting, but the commission meeting after that, just offering that up as a suggestion.
That's a good reminder that we continue to promote it ourselves as people. Because people connect better with people, you know, until they are familiar with the organization itself. And then they might be encouraged to follow the organization. So good reminder.
I would think that one of their goals that we've had for many years is to promote the existence of the commission. Let people don't even know we exist and therefore wouldn't even go to Facebook to look at us. And I don't know, I don't think we've ever done any kind of a survey to find out if people know we exist and what we do, you know? Anyway, that's my, I don't know if anybody started that. And because it's really, that's way back there, but it's important. I mean, I know, I wouldn't, I've been disabled for more than 15 years. And it's because of my girlfriend, Arlene, who brought me to a meeting six years ago. I had no idea that the commission existed. I mean, I don't know how we reach out to people, but it would be, that could be a communication goal for the year.
Years ago, maybe three or four, that might have been the case, Rose. However, over the last three years, we've been getting to all of these civic clubs, getting the word out with the club, getting letters to the editor and, you know, partnering.
And of course, challenge by choice. I mean, part of it is, is that when I didn't know about it, then I got involved. And so I've been doing a lot of stuff for the past five years. So I guess I've kind of helped raise the awareness for it without thinking.
It certainly has been raised. I think when we went to our first meetings to speak to groups, some of them didn't. But the next time, how many of you are aware of the commission? About 78% would raise their hands. So I think it's just taking time to get people to know. We've got to, another thing coming out in the supplement with the Athens County Board of Developmental Disabilities. So Rome wasn't built in a day. We just have to keep chipping away at this.
You can now, with my comment. Because we have done a lot.
And I think, you know, and this is, I've talked about this before, is that maybe some public confusion might be on what a city commission is and how to get involved. And so that's why I had the original idea of, and this was just like galaxy braining. I don't have a cemented plan or steps forward, but some type of collaboration with other city commissions to just promote that sense of community on, just to the wider city of Athens. Because it's not, it's not a county agency. It's not, I don't know, there's, it's members of the community, members of your own neighborhood getting together to advocate for each other. And I think that is just really remarkable work. And yeah, I second what Dr. Lewis says and, you know, the work that's been done in getting our name out to the press and with our civic engagement and everything that we've done. But I think in terms of educating the public on what a commission is exactly, maybe we could build off of that. So like I said, I don't know what that looks like yet and I can do some more, you know, thinking about it, especially as I'm in the Art of Hosting training through the Athens County Foundation. And I know that the Race Relations Commission has a lot of involvement with that. And so, yeah, I'm definitely curious to see what our options are.
I think there are about 18 to 20 commissions in the city. And they had a meeting years ago where all of us got together and sort of talked about, I didn't know even half of them were in progress of working in Athens. And I know that the law director, Lisa, for me, that this Athens City Commission on Disabilities is the most active commission in the city. Because she sees our announcements and, you know, you can ask Ryan and Scott, you know, they're really busy, best I think more than any other commission. So we're really trying to make things happen and we just have to keep up the work that we're doing, all of us together.
Michael, and you work at WUB?
Yes, that's correct.
Just thinking about opportunities to, you know, tell our story and share what we do. I wonder if there's room to get a news feature of some kind or a video feature of some kind? I don't know if you work with students or not, but maybe there might be, I could do there. I don't know, just trying to think it out loud here.
Can I jump in before Michael starts?
Absolutely.
We work very closely with Emily Votom. Maybe Michael doesn't know this. But she's done a lot of our features. Anytime we've done the calling our artists, anything, she's done not only a feature on the web but promoted it, but also done a mini two or three minute radio spot on FM. Based with Emily and anything we send to her, she's really, really good. And then I don't know, I don't know who's in the newsroom now, but with COVID, there hasn't been a lot going on, but we would do interviews there too. When, who's the young lady that just asked Michael? Your newsroom director?
Oh, Allison Hunter.
Allison Hunter. We played in touch with Allison Hunter and when we could, we would get interviews on there.
I think now there's a student, that group, the podcast and Instagram, Facebook. Mainly that's their platform. It would be right up their alley. I think some of the seniors are looking to enhance some of their work before they leave in late April. So there's some focus thing that you want me to put a bug in the air. I meet with them every Thursday night and it's just a content meeting, you know, what's going to be next, what's on next week's show type of thing, what could be featured, et cetera.
The Walk and Roll would be.
Right, exactly. I was going to say we have a Walk and Roll coming up, so maybe that's a good angle for the commission.
Do you know what that is, Michael? The Walk and Roll?
A little bit.
What we usually do, we have folks who are able to walk and those of us who aren't able to roll, in our wheelchairs with a cane or a walker, whatever. And over the last couple of years, we have walked and rolled over the streets of Athens to assess them for being able to navigate them, not only the streets but the buildings and all of that. So this is one that's coming up and we've been doing them by Zoom over the last year for us. And so this one will be the same. And there will be a couple of people who are kind of out on the street, like out there walking and rolling. Usually Noah and, oh, Ron, what's his name, Ron Delatch. And they're usually doing it while we're watching and taking notes and seeing what's what. So that's what's coming up. And that might be a good project for the students to make.
Oh, yeah. That'd be good.
Trying to pull up the email to find out where that is. What we'll do, Michael, is forward you the email with the details.
Oh, that'd be perfect. Yep. I can forward that on. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it up as an opportunity. If they're interested. And I think some of the, just getting back to our bullet item, some of the other goals that we had was to feature our members, which we talked about doing, so we have a plan in place for that. Were there any other goals, Claire, that we hadn't hit on yet?
I believe that one of them was that cross collaboration with other commissions, which we have also discussed. And then the other one was the regular column with one of the local papers, which we have also done. So.
Well done, team. All right. Were there any items not on the agenda that anyone wanted to talk about? Seeing none, I see here on our agenda, the next meeting is April 8th at 5:30. We'll continue to meet by Zoom and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll do it.
Second. All in favor, Michael seconded, although you're on mute, but I saw your lips move. All in favor, say aye.